I'd like to bring the city council meeting to order. It's Tuesday, September 19th, 2023 at 7:20 PM. Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. President.
Jakey Walker.
President.
John Moore.
Here.
Dean Strom.
Present.
Bart Muni.
Here.
Marty Short.
At this time, we will have citizens' comments. We ask that you come to the podium, state your name, and you'll have two minutes on your comment.
Hi, my name is Royal Couple. I just had a comment about splash that know that there was money offered you guys. I started a great long time ago with a couple other people. I was really interested in getting this idea brought here and seeing that there has been turnover to the mayor, congratulated him and needed $200,000. I was just wondering if it's all become of that, if it's going anywhere, if the community can raise some money. Like, just wonder where that's at.
Thank you.
My name is Craig Hendry. I made a comment at the Board of Works meeting, Jack, I think you'll remember that. I just wanted to comment saying that we, as the public, do expect you guys to comply with the Indiana Code for Public Records. I've turned in maybe four or five public records requests since the last meeting. None of them have been fulfilled. It's hard for us, as the citizens, to hold you all accountable as our public servants if you all won't release the public records that are relevant to your activities as public servants. So I would ask that you guys start complying with the law if that's not too difficult. And with that, I'll turn over the rest of my time in this meeting.
Thank you. Anybody else? The council have any comments at this time?
I have one, please.
Yes, sir.
Bob, I'm sorry, who's Bob? Alexander. Okay, so open door law allows all members of the public access to certain meetings. There is no requirement for a person to be a citizen of the jurisdiction or a constituent of the governing body to be permitted access to this meeting. So they don't have to be a citizen of the city of Clinton. That's the open door law of state of Indiana.
I don't think I said anything of that nature.
When we're asking for his address, we don't ask for addresses for the public because it doesn't matter.
People meet people who are residents of the city of Clinton. That's a good gesture, good thing.
All right, thank you. We appreciate that.
Anyone else on the council have anything at this time? Okay, I don't have any comments either. I've got minutes of the past meeting. I think that Steve handed them out just a little bit ago. Does anyone have any questions on those minutes?
No. Two of us didn't get the chance to adjourn the meeting. Last time.
My question, is this the appropriate time of the meeting? Is this the appropriate time of the meeting?
Yeah.
Do we have an update on the generator?
On what?
The generator.
The generator is still on. We bought the generator, it didn't work. We didn't even get hooked. We found out that it wasn't the right size, so it went back to Menards to have it on order. But we haven't heard any updates on the old thing. And it also includes a new switch because the switch wouldn't work with this one. So. And I believe that there's $6,000 yet that were. Duke is going to reimburse us on that.
So we don't have a timeline, that's what I'm asking.
No. They're just backordered on them. It took us about eight months to get the one that we got, so I don't know if it's going to be long or short.
Do we have any idea what the number is on the new one?
Pardon?
Do we have any idea what the number is on the new one?
You mean the dollar amount?
This was given to me. I just wonder if it matches what we're getting.
I believe so. I can check on that.
Okay.
But I believe it is 61, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And with the transfer switch, automatic transfer switch. Motion to accept.
On line seven here, John was wondering why we were spending $1.3 million more than we took in. Did you ever get an answer to that, John?
I didn't ask why, I just pointed out that as of that report, last month's report, that's where we were on track to have happen. I didn't ask why, though. But I did want to point out.
One thing on that, we had the Nastree project. We had some, well, bad weather around and all the trees were damaged down.
Let's see, that's another thing, too. We don't get the property tax distribution until December, so let's just. If you factor that into it, even if we are going to go on the whole, it's not going to be 1.3 million. But as of last month, if you didn't factor it into it, that's where we were, what we were looking at.
I think it moves a little through.
Second.
I've got a first and second to approve of the minutes as presented from the past meeting. Roll call, vote please.
Jakey Walker.
Yes.
John Moore.
Yes.
Dean Strom.
Yes.
Bart Muni.
Yes.
Marty Short.
Yes.
All right, gentlemen, next we have the financial reports and claims.
Hey, Steve.
Yeah.
I didn't really ask this last month because you weren't here and I didn't want to grill her. How come the security cameras for the parks is always in the negative?
It's been at Wason's silo this year. Well, I understand there was money appropriated for it, but there was never. There actually wasn't money for it, but we got $14,000.
Looks like 16,319. But they bought cameras?
From my understanding, they bought cameras after the last year. For me.
Are they paid for?
They've been paid for, right.
Okay. And then.
But that fund is in the hole, so you know, if you're not a general fund.
How are we going to fund that account then?
Well, if there's money around, just book the general fund, put somebody in there, make it balance out.
Will I do that? Okay. Because the SBOA probably wouldn't like an angry.
We'll get right into 2023 with that deficit.
Yeah.
And we did get written up and they ordered about that, too.
How about the stormwater construction account being 13,000 in the negative?
Same thing, well, we look, that's part of that project.
Okay. The Nastree project, well. Because that was funded.
Yeah, it was funded, but we still have money to be appropriate for that.
Talking about what Mr. Alexander brought up during the Board of Works meeting. This, we've got a new clerk treasurer. So he's in the process of training himself and there are some things we all know are messed up. Even those are messed up. But we need to get a budget approved and adopted by the due date because if we don't, we're stuck with last year's levies, which means we are stuck with last year's funds. And prices did not go down, they all went up. So the other day, when the police committee and we were talking with the attorney, it seemed like the smart thing for us to do would be get this budget ironed out and passed and then spend the next couple of months getting things warped around so that at the end of the year, on 12/31, if the accounts aren't, you know, where they're supposed to be, at least they'll be in the black. They won't be in the red. But to me, it makes sense because you can go through here and some of these appropriations are in negative balances, but yet you get down to the bottom line and there's still money in the fund. So it's not like they're going broke, it's just that money is going to have to be moved.
And that happens every year, pretty much. The department heads move it around. Steve, you're going to have to probably do some of your own budget. Because you're over in a couple of areas, I'm sure you're aware of that.
Now, you know, we're at about, I figured up, we're at day, just right today, we're at 269, which puts us at 74%, a little bit more than 74% over the year, which leaves us with 25, 26%.
Your budget, yeah.
Well, actually, no, I'm talking about overall because timeline wise, that's where we're at as far as the calendar goes. So we've got to look at that aspect of it, too. We don't have a lot of time left, but yet we're not at the deadline, too, you know.
But I do have a question. On some of these people's salaries, we're nine months into the year and what was appropriated, there's more than 50% left. And that shouldn't be if they're getting paid the way they're supposed to.
Well, I know you brought up the point about the two department heads being different, pay being different. And again, that was longevity pay, I figured into that. And you're right, I mean, we're. I guarantee we're going to come out okay at the end. I mean, it's just like Dean said, you know, and we knew going into this. I know in January, when I was still on the city council, that we knew we were going to, this was going to be a tight year. But we're not, we're not going to be, what do I want to say, dead broke, that's a good way of saying it.
Are we going to have enough to give the police department?
Are you ready?
We won't talk about that now, I mean, I could talk.
That's on the salary ordinance.
Let's talk about it during salary ordinance.
Yeah.
Good budget.
Salary ordinance will be November and December because it takes two reads.
I'm sorry?
The salary ordinance takes two reads, so we'll do the first read in November, December.
So, Dean, you said this happens every year. John, earlier today, you told me that 30% is what we ended with last year?
I thought, even in the neighborhood of 30, 33%, yes.
So we're at 34 now?
Well, according to the.
Do we still have three months to go?
Well, that's a good question. Some of them are at 34.
Page 23.
Grand total is 34.74%. Yeah, we got three months to go.
So we're actually behind from last year, from last year.
We should have, well, for three months, you should have 25%.
Yeah.
So we're at three and a half months, 30%, 34% is going to be close, but we've had a couple of things happen that weren't anticipated. And then. I don't know, there is. The one thing that's, got things messed up for me is the certified shares has been.
He's at 43%.
Double reported.
We're beating some of these for secret taxes. Coming into.
It's not that critical.
We got $14,000.
As long as it's not personal service.
Anyway, I gave all you guys a copy of that Form 1 where I actually took and went back two years or three years. So you've got 2022, 2023, and 2024, and you can kind of see what's going on. And you're going to notice that all of a sudden, city council is paying the electric bill that the motor vehicle highway used to pay, which is why, one of the reasons why our appropriated amount is in red because it's, we're having to pay that, and I can't pay it on the motor vehicle highway. So.
Thanks for that report, John.
There's some little tidbits in there that.
So the council's in charge of the electric bills, then?
Well, no, it's just we're, they're coming out of our fund account. The money's coming from our.
We don't have that kind of money.
Well, we will under a new budget.
A new budget, a budget for.
Okay.
But it's just the state's way of saying, we want you to survive, but we don't want you to get wealthy surviving.
Very well said.
I know how that works.
Anybody got anything else on the financials?
Before the motion, I'm still going to object, as I did last time. I didn't receive these papers until 2:30 and 4 o'clock this afternoon. The city laws say that they should be with us at 4 o'clock on Friday, and my packets weren't there. I actually still don't have the complete set of paperwork I asked for. He was too busy today to get those to me, so I will be voting no based on the violation of the law.
It doesn't say anything about 4 o'clock and yours.
It says Friday.
It says Friday, but it didn't say 4.
Well, but I didn't get them till today at 4:00, so I didn't get them on Friday at all.
I understand what you're saying.
So I don't think we operate a city by withholding information. Also, I've also sent in yet another FOIA based on the state recommending that you give me access, read-only access to the general ledger, and that still has not been provided. Nor have I received a response, but no answer. So we've been waiting to march to see why these numbers are so messed up and so we can get them corrected. And you're still denying the legislative board, even though the SBOA has told you twice to allow me access. So you can make a motion now.
Can I ask you to repeat what you just said?
Oh, I just said that the letter from the SBOA said that it is common for a legislative board member to have access to the funds system in read-only mode so that we can look at these accounts and find out how the money's flowing. I offered to help in March and May to help correct these numbers that we keep saying are wrong. So we still continue all year to let these numbers be wrong, so I'm not going to be voting in the affirmative for this because I don't want to be held liable for making decisions without financial information from the city as a legislative board member.
Well, all that we do is we.
No, it's not what we do. Legislative boards handle taxpayer money, period.
We vote and take a vote that we accepted the reports from the Board of Work.
But I don't accept reports that are wrong.
Okay, you got your.
Okay. I will accept reports that are right. And I will accept it when I get the reports on Friday and when I get all the reports. I'm still missing reports. And I was told today that, and I was told a month ago, it's political. Yeah, I seen.
Which reporter are you missing?
I gave a list of like four or five reports that I wanted, the APDs and all that. And I didn't get any of those. So. It's not legal, not legal withhold information from the legislative board.
But yeah, are you asking for you or for the board? Because I don't recall it coming up before the board wanting to know all this stuff. And I really question the necessity for having an audit when we just went through an audit with the SBOA.
What are you talking about, audit?
You're the one requesting an audit. You're wanting access to the read-only files, which is basically is saying you're wanting to audit it. And we just went through an audit, so what are you going to see that they didn't see?
Well, it's not what I'm going to see, it's maybe if I could get in to see, since I have 20 years of accounting experience, why these accounts are negative. The question is, why does it look like this? And then you want us to vote on numbers on paper when they're obviously wrong? I mean, I got minus 870% on office supplies?
Well, we know what's wrong, we've been told what's wrong.
What's wrong?
It's wrong because it all got paid for out of one account instead of getting divvied up into the four accounts that it went, or four places that it went to, that's why it's wrong.
So you're telling me that I can't assist in getting these numbers correct so we can vote on proper numbers instead of numbers that we, as this legislative board, have no idea what we're voting on?
I am telling you as a council person to another council person that I would not even want to do it myself. If we're going to have somebody do it, I want somebody doing it that is not related to us whatsoever so that nothing improper can be even dreamed of.
What would be improper with read-only access?
Well, who knows? I'm not as technologically educated as you are.
Well, let's make it, let's make it un-technical. I want to be able to see, click on these fields and break down what's in there. And that way I can see why they're negative, and then we can make a list of things to correct this. I mean, I cannot believe we have gone a whole year with these numbers the way they are. And I was told today we may have to make some appropriations. I said that, how do I do that when I don't even know what these are if they're correct? How can I move money from one account to another account when I don't know what the accounts' proper values are? I don't want access to change anything. I want access to take notes. I mean, I told you I can have access to the file cabinet, great, I see what bills we received. But it's obviously, we're not paying them properly. They're not coming out of the right accounts, you just said that, and that's true, I can tell that. So who is in charge? And I'm not going to pull out names because you'll notice I hardly ever use names, but two people were supposed to go in there and work on this, and don't say anything. But you have somebody else that did this for 20 years that says, we need to click on each of these counts and see what they are, and I can't do that here. I can't do that here. I have $3,000, I asked last month, they did provide me the information. I went in and asked why that didn't appear on the months that those are dated. So was that made up to fulfill my FOIA? Because I have the April, but that's not on there. I have the June, but that's not on there. But it doesn't appear, I don't catch it until August. There's $3,000 out of the bank and I don't know how, where it went, I do now.
Menards, 7/31/2023, it wouldn't show up till August. The invoice date was 5/19, but the date of the thing was 7/31.
Are you talking about August?
No, I'm talking about that right there on the Menards bill, you've got a date of 7/31, so it's not going to show up until August.
Right, but in August, I had 6,000 deducted from that account. In July, I had $0 deducted from that account.
Well, on the 30, July, we meet before the 31st, actually, we didn't even meet in July this year, did we?
John, the question's about the 3,000 in April.
Repair of guard rail. James H. Drew Corporation.
In August, it went to 9,000, in June and July, it was at $0. So all of a sudden, 9,000 came out of that appropriation. That's my point. The April one's the one that's a question. I didn't catch it until the July one went through in August. But I specifically asked for that, and that was produced for me. Then I look at July and April, and it doesn't appear in my July and April records.
Was that added?
Yes.
The 6,000 was for that.
Generator.
And then the 3,000 was to repair the guard rail that was hit. And our insurance deduct was 2,500.
Right, but I'm just, this doesn't have anything to do with any of the bills, Jack. This just has to do with why our reports aren't reflecting payments when they're coming out of the thing. I'm making a decision on $3,000 that I don't see has come out until July and August, is what I'm saying, when it should have come out in April. The $3,000 is the one in question, not the Menards.
Yeah, but it's, the thing's dated 6/1, so.
But that, then again.
But I'm.
It's worse than all that.
The bill was entered in April, April 24th, I went in and had them, they clicked on those buttons for me so I could see. The bill was entered in April, paid in June, didn't appear until the August as a deduction from the appropriations account. That's my question, why are these bills floating around? We have no idea what's in these numbers right here. So I, the state has already told you by law what, that I do have access, read-only? That way I can't make any changes. I've done key fund, I did a key fund under the whole Shepherd administration. I still do key fund for other cities in this county. I mean, I know how to use it.
You did what now?
Key fund.
For, for what?
Shepherds. I ran the key fund system here when it was, when he was here for all those years, but one. I'm familiar with the system. Why do you deny somebody familiar with the system to go in there in read-only status? I don't want access to change anything. I wouldn't even want that. You're right, John. I would not want that. That comes into a lot of question. I just want access to say, why is this number negative? Oh, these ten items make it negative. Are these ten items really belonging to that account, or should they be moved to some other account?
Can I make a comment on this?
Yeah, it's your bailiff.
Now, I've talked to Keystone. And Keystone doesn't think it would be appropriate for someone to get into our server, first of all. And even at, and set the Keystone itself up as read-only. Having said that, in the interest of transparency, I have no problem with you finding whatever you need to find. I honestly think that since, if you were a citizen, I think that your access would be denied. And I think since you're a board member, that's kind of a horse of a different color. And I think it needs to go back to the board to make their recommendation as to what they want to do as far as, because the way I understand it, the state board of accounts, an individual can't make a audit of the uh, system. I mean, it's got to be done by whoever they, they being state board of accounts says, such as uh, uh, what's Kelly, uh, oh, that accounting firm that we use sometimes.
Baker Kelly?
Baker Kelly, thank you. My recommendation is to have the board or the council pass or make a motion that uh, they either allow or or don't allow this to happen, or to set up a separate account, accounting firm, again, Baker Kelly, or somebody that knows our system. And I, and I talked to Tina Bradshaw, and she said that this system has been changed so many times that somebody that's had information or even schooling on it two years ago would not understand it today.
Do you know that last year Newport Water's server crashed? And I went in there and recovered fifteen days of data that was lost for them?
No clue.
I just don't understand why the state board of accounts says one thing. And we try and change the law here. Under code thirty-six, four, six, twenty-one, the legislative body can choose to investigate the records of the unit. I would also recommend contacting Indiana Public Access.
Okay, this is a legislative body.
Yeah, let's see, let's see. Let's see if the city council wants to try and hide the information about why these numbers are wrong all year. So I'll leave it up to you then.
I make a motion to allow Bart access to read-only files in the city's bookkeeping system.
I'll second.
For full transparency. So on discussion, you got a motion on the second. How much of an inconvenience is that going to be for you for him to be doing that?
I have no room in my office.
None on read-only.
No, it's read-only. He's asking if there's a PC available for me.
I mean, plus we, we're filling out checks and doing bookwork and everything all day long, so.
I don't know your topography. Are there any other computers in this? I don't know. I would assume Jessica has one, and there's one at that service. Is there still one where Leonard sat?
I don't know.
Yes.
There is? So there's an open computer in the water office?
No clue.
But then by the same token, do they have that same program on them that his does? Because don't you have to have that program on there to be able to read it?
I'm assuming you could. They could put it on there.
You should be able to read it remotely. If you get the password.
Do you know Brandon for sure? I'm sorry. Yeah, I don't think, no, you're, you're, yeah, he's, he's right. No, I, I said no. I'm sorry, I didn't say it louder.
I mean.
Right. Right.
No one sitting on that hour should be auditing.
Well, it's not, it's not an audit. The, the word audit keeps coming up, but it's, the word is inspection, and that's what the state board of accounts use. And we're looking at these numbers. I don't know, have you ever seen one of these, Brandon? Okay, so, yeah, so I got a number of minus five hundred dollars, minus two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Tells me nothing. I have no idea what's in that. Yeah.
An outside firm or outside company should walk you through that. No one on that board should, besides this gentleman over here, should have access to that data.
Well, the state sees it. I understand what you're saying. Well, but the state says different. This is, this is city government.
I know, we do city government.
Okay. And it's very calm, as they stated, it's common for that to happen.
Which brings up my second point, or my comment that I made to you the other day, too. Apparently you and I are talking to two different people over there.
Yeah, I've sent that over for legal opinion. And I've also sent the FOIA back to public access.
What I'm talking to tends to agree with that gentleman there. That uh, we should not be doing it, but she also says that it is a legal thing and I have not talked to their legal advisor, but I'm just basing my personal thought is if we want it done, somebody that is not a part of this board ought to be refereeing it and doing it, and then they can give us what we need to know. That's just my opinion.
And how much would that cost the citizens to find out? Oh, that's a problem. So that's why we're not doing that, but you have somebody offering to do it for free. Just taking notes on a read-only system. I don't know what you're trying to hide.
I don't know that we're trying to hide anything.
Well, then prove it. Then prove it. Then prove it.
Well, I, I'll tell you, I don't think I'd let you look at my checkbook.
Yeah, your checkbook, your checkbook's not taxpayer money. This is taxpayer money. These people, this is their money. This is their money, not our money.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, I do. I go to the Casey's every day. Yeah, you're right. Should be quiet. It's real life.
I'm sorry, you want to make your motion here. Hey, let's hold it. Let's hold down. Let's hold it. Let's hold it.
Trying to get educated on where all this money's at so he can make a proper vote.
Yeah.
Right now, nobody knows where it's at. So how are you guys voting on anything? And it's not an official investigation. It's not like Mr.
Excuse me, the public comment was earlier in the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Um, we're not voting on, all we're voting on is the fact that we've received these reports. Board of Works is the one that actually approve expenditures.
That's not true either. We've had this discussion. I stated the laws to you.
You have stated your interpretation of the laws to me, and it's wrong.
No, it's not.
Either that or every city in the state of Indiana is doing it wrong.
Then they're doing it wrong. The legislative body of the United States of America handles the taxpayers' money, period. The Board of Works handles utility collected income and dispenses it. How in the world is a legislative body giving up its right to oversee taxpayer money?
We got a lawyer sitting there. We're paying by the hour.
You're paying me by the hour?
Yeah.
Well, is that not basic civics? Make it a government legislative body handles taxpayer money?
That's absolutely right.
Handles taxpayer money?
Physical body, not legislative body, physical body.
And are we the?
Authority over budgets vested in you because you're a physical body, well, but statute on approval claims, not required city council approval claims, you're practicing for.
Taxpayer money versus utility money because the.
No, it's the same, same claim statute. We, we did this five, ten years ago.
So this has come up before. This isn't the first time.
Right, and we were right the first time, and we're still right.
Is there public comment available? I just want a question. Is there public comment later?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Marty, you want to make, I, I'm sorry, you want to make that motion again?
Okay. I make a motion that we give Bart Mooney, city councilman, access to read-only files on the city's accounting system if the city actually has nothing to hide.
Bart's second. So I've got a first and second, a motion from Marty Shortridge, second by Bart that we allow Bart to have access to funds so he can look to see where we're at on our balances. Roll call, vote please.
J T Walker.
No.
John Moore.
No.
You got me kidding.
Oh.
Seriously.
Bart Mooney.
Yes.
Marty Shortridge.
Yes.
And that, but I did have one question for you. You'd said that we were hiding something. Who, who do you think is hiding something?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at.
No, I'm saying, I don't, I'm, I'm just asking.
I'm looking at accounts that are obviously not right.
Okay, but who, who does that?
I don't know who does that. That's a good question.
You don't know where you get that from?
I get it from the clerk's office.
Sir.
Okay, and is the clerk's office the only one that puts in numbers?
Can I make a comment here?
I'm not the fizzy.
Are, are we looking at, are you looking at this like a, a business?
I know the difference, Steve. I did, I did batch accounting for, I just gave that book to, that's my book, my Bible from Chrysler for twenty years. I did accounting. I did the breakdowns of these appropriations accounts. I did the budgets for there. After Melanie was done, I went through and verified everything she did and had to do a, a twelve-page report every night.
I understand that.
Okay.
But the point is, we're not going to zero out in the end. I mean, you know what I'm saying? It's like we carry over, uh, Marty brought up about the, the cameras from the.
Right, I understand that. I get it.
Okay.
I get it, but the point is we're putting bills in, putting our accounts into the negative. And we don't know why they're negatives.
We do that every year. Specific, but it's not the account that's going into the negative. It's the appropriated phone that's going into the negative. The account itself, there's only one, possibly two, that security cameras thing, and it's all screwed up, but that happened.
Okay, the, the security cameras, I understand, because I mean, Lori already explained that to all of us months and months ago. That was ask and answer. But I'm looking here, Department CC, is that the city clerk or the city court clerk?
CC.
CD or county page?
No, CC.
Common Council.
Common Council.
Common Council, CC.
So our account's down to ten percent. Are we going to make the end of the year?
Well, which, which you got to look at. So we're trying your effort bill.
Nice job. Nice job.
So we're going to move here.
All right.
Common Council. No, and I'm looking at this right here.
Right, okay.
Left, we got ten percent left for the year. You've got a circle.
But go back to here. You got a hundred percent like there that can be transferred down some weeks next.
Right, but no, 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 that's not how you read that. Ten percent's what I got left for the year. I should have thirty percent. My average is thirty-four. I got ten. So I'm sure.
Ten percent of what was appropriated, there is money in each line item of that appropriation account, Bart.
That's not how you read that. Ten percent is how, that's the grand total of that department. We're down to ten percent, and right now we should be at thirty-two percent, right, John? I'm looking at page three.
Thirty-two, yeah, I'm looking right at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should be at thirty-two.
We should be at thirty-two. We're at ten. No, you don't move stuff like that, Dean.
No.
You, you can move stuff, you're right. You can move like this to here to balance it out.
That around.
Okay, yes, and this to here. But when we're done moving that, we're still at ten percent because this is the total. That's the total. We don't have enough money in that account. Now I want to know why. What's in these accounts that we are going to have to reappropriate money? Twenty-two percent for B O W. They're under.
I'll be pretty thin by the end of the year.
I mean, I understand there's money in these other accounts. Dean, there's money in the other account. That means we have to reappropriate money. Here I got minus three hundred.
Let me share something with you, Bart.
Okay.
You keep mentioning twenty-two years in, in the accounting business. Okay, I appreciate that. I've served on this council almost forty years. Not once have we went belly up.
I'm not, I never said that.
Through each year. And we went through some real tough times.
I've never said that.
Through this if we work together and try to come to a common ground.
Okay. But working together, you're going to ask me to vote on moving money. I got three hundred and seventy-three percent in the negative for this account, unsafe building fund.
Well, that's not even supposed to be budgeted.
That's not a budget item.
We don't want to talk about where we're living.
I know, Dean, I, I understand what you just said, and I agree with that, because if I look at the grand total for the whole city, we're at thirty-four percent. We should be at thirty-two. We're above board. But my question is, why are we moving money to these accounts that are in a deficit? That's my question. And I've been told we don't have everything done. We're working on budgets right now. We're not trying to straighten out the books. Is that what I understood tonight?
Well, as you work on the budget, you obviously have to straighten out the books.
Yeah, you're working on a budget with books that aren't even adding up.
Well, no, they might not be adding up, but they're, they're making them add up to make the budget. They got to be, because next month is do or die.
Okay. Okay. We still need to go through the Form One.
Yes. New business, budget Form Ones, does anybody have any questions on those? You can look at those and you can, you can change some stuff around next meeting. These are just for your information. And then when you pass the budget next month.
On these uh, things, when you go back to on page six, the police clothing allowance, when you compare it to last year's thing, you've got the reserves and the regulars switched out.
Page six, same here.
Yeah, account line item code one thirty-seven. You got two entries right in row, but the reserves are not going to get a five thousand dollar allowance and the patrol guy, the regular guy, two thousand.
So, yeah, I will.
Okay, and then on page seven, on uh, li, the line item codes one twenty and one thirty-one, I think you got those backwards. Because your Medicare is going to be lower than your bike. And then on some of those stuff, did you purposely not put anything in for this year?
Well, I don't know, John, I don't wish one was for sure.
Well, on local road and street was one of them.
Yeah, there's a few categories out here and there.
And then uniforms for the motor vehicle highway, you left it blank.
I don't know if that was intentional or not. I had to double check. I, I realized today that I send all these to send all these to council. And I've talked to department heads, all of them, except for Scott, he didn't have budget, but um, I don't know that I've shared the Form One department heads opportunity today. So I'm going to do that and ask them to go back over. I, I know Billy's seen them.
I talked to Chris outside, I didn't know about his, I talked to Cindy yesterday, I guess, but, and we went over some of it, but I haven't actually sat down with them to go over it. And Steve and I have been working more on the other revenue side of things and stuff like that, we'll try and. Fix these if there are mistakes, that's why we advertise high, so if there's mistakes, we can come back in and add things in, because inevitably we forget something. And I know this has been some discussion, but I, I don't know, how much was budgeted for common council electric this year?
Yes, you are. It was a hundred thousand, I don't know if it changed on this report, the preliminary report was a hundred thousand.
No, what was budgeted this year?
Oh. I didn't have last year, so I don't know.
For twenty twenty-three, there was thirty-eight thousand five hundred and twelve, and then for next year, you're budgeting a hundred grand.
Yeah, so that, it's trying to answer. State, I, I've explained this to Cindy a couple times, I've, I've, mayor about it, the city has not been doing a very good job budgeting for N B H. Several years ago, legislators. Increased the gas cap. When they did that, that means more revenue, somewhat more revenue from cities down in the campus, but when they did that, they also imposed a new rule. Fifty percent of your N B H distributions have to be used for, half go to a fund called restricted, half go to a fund called unrestricted. And you see that in your fund report, we have two N B H funds, restricted and unrestricted. The issue we have, and a lot of small places have, is the restricted money, as the name implies, can only be used for certain things. Pavement, pavement preservation. Stuff like asphalt, paving, chipping seal cannot be used for puddles, can't be used for snow removal, can't be used to pay salaries or benefits unless. You're paying the employees to go out there and pave for, for your chipping seal. So that sort of cut our N B H distribution in effect by half, because we used to fund our entire street department out of our N B H, and now we can really only pay. Half for salaries and benefits and, and fuel and things like that, that all has to come out of that unrestricted money that we get, that's only a hundred thousand dollars. Okay, so when you take the hundred thousand, we get unrestricted, we do do a little top property tax levy, and we do get some other little bits and pieces. I've estimated we got about a hundred and forty thousand dollars of unrestricted N B H revenue that we can spend for our street department. That's not enough to pay people, pay for fuel, pay for repairs and maintenance, and pay for streetlights. The streetlights have to be paid someplace else, we can't pay for them out of restricted. So those expenses have been shifted back to the council for the next year, in fact, I think that's probably why your budget in the common council is high, it, 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 it. Why you're down in that percentage is because I expect your electrical expenses this year are very high, because we had to start paying the streetlights out of there. We have the money appropriated to N B H budget, do it, we don't have to cash. And I'm more, much more concerned about not having the cash than I am the appropriation, cash is a problem, if we get a negative balance, then we have to throw more money. So your fund's healthy, and, and, and so we had to shift those streetlights over to the common council, but probably, we used to do this years ago, we'd go two years, pay nine. And we go two years, pay nine N B H, we can't ever, at this point, unless the legislature changes rules or we eliminate our street department employees, we're never going to be able to pay for streetlights without N B H. Until there's something changed, so it's going to have to come out of the common council, we'll see a future as far as I. Unless, like I said, something changes, there have been some efforts, this is a problem for cities, towns, it's probably the county. It's, it's a problem for our county trying to deal with this, because they are trying to pay for all their highway department out of their unrestricted money, and they have to save a little bit yet. So there is aim, there's support of some initiatives at the legislature to get them to change that, and to either eliminate that or reduce it, so that it's like a seventy-five, twenty-five split, so the seventy-five percent of the money can be used. Because it's not enough to pay for your people, when you have this limitation on how it can be spent, so I, I did want to make sure the council aware of that, that, that's probably the biggest change. The other big change to the proposed budget, I mean, honestly, the second biggest change we had is we had one employee who was taking the insurance and had her spouse on it, and. She is no longer with us, and her replacement doesn't take the insurance, that saves us like twenty grand, so that, that helped a lot. We don't know what the insurance costs are going to be for next year yet, we won't know that till Jack.
Next month, October.
October, so we do have some placeholders in here, we did do, I think, four percent health insurance increase tentatively, I doubt that's going to be enough, I hope it is, that'd be wonderful. If it isn't, then we may have to make some further adjustments once we get those numbers, or we do have some money. Public safety budget includes appropriations for health insurance, our biggest. Expense we'd have for health insurance comes from our police department, because it's where we have the most employees. So their budget for health insurance is split, most of it's in the general fund, but we do have. An appropriation in public safety for it as well, we have one for fire department too, that's because we can use that money for fire and police, we can use it to pay for some of their health insurance. So that money is there to, if there is some massive or large health insurance increase, we may have to pay for some of their insurance out of there, that money is still available this year, last I looked, we haven't spent those appropriations this year, so that's great. I think that police and fire are doing a great job with their budgets right now, I mean, you know, it's, it's been a struggle, and I, I, I know that they're trying to always do less or do more with, with less, and they've got a lot on their plate. And so, you know, we've, we've been trying to work the best we can to get these revenue numbers down, to project out what we're going to have, and to figure out what our tax levy is going to be. If you do see anything else that seems out of place, please let us know, me or Steve, or Tony, I'm throwing Tony into this.
Okay, zoning, trash, last year there was six oh two, this year there's nothing. Motor vehicle uniforms, last year was twelve oh five, this year's nothing. Motor vehicle material, nine thousand last year.
That may be out.
And it is out.
Because I, we had, I did look, it may be the uniform, we had to put a little bit in there, but I think what's, is it like one thirty-seven N B H budget? So, under, the, oh, you don't get the.
Yeah, one thirty-seven, four forty-three.
So I projected our revenues to be like one forty.
Okay.
I was trying to, I was trying.
So then there's no utility services either, budgeted under N B H this year.
Is there some gas, there is some gas.
There is gas and heat, electric instead.
We could shift a little, we could maybe move a thousand out down to there.
Okay, and then.
I'm making notes.
You need to point out too, that this year, when you're going through the Form Ones, we, there is money in there from the American Rescue Plan. And the opioid unrestricted and restricted that's been budgeted. So there is some money there that we might be able to do something nice for our workforce.
Yeah, our, we have four hundred and seventy-three thousand change left of ARPA, we don't have to spend, I actually think it's twenty twenty-six, we had to spend five, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. We're supposed to have obligated it by the end of twenty twenty-four, so we went ahead and put it in this year's budget, so it's appropriate. I'm not sure, you know, that, that's up to you guys openly, kind of decide what you want to do with it, the opioids have hard time saying that we're opioid money. We don't get a lot, this is from settlement, the attorney generals did with. The drug companies and some other Walgreens and those kind of folks, we are for the next like twenty years going to get, I don't remember what, it's like fifteen hundred?
Yeah, it wasn't much.
It wasn't much, some of it's unrestricted, some of it's restricted, they're unrestricted, you can spend on anything, of course, it's not very much. The restricted, there is a thing about this thing of what you can spend on. And, and Steve, Steve had a, you know, Steve and I were talking about that, because he's got to file periodic reports on it, it's easier right now because we have spending. But once we start to spend it, he's got to file some reports about it, and so that's something that, that we need to think about, he had an idea about maybe trying to use some of that restricted money to support. Narcotics Anonymous, or some of the folks in some of the programs we have in town, we're trying to help people recover or, or, or. You know, move on with their lives and, and that, and see, and I, you know, those are things that we, we put in here, we don't have, there's no firm plan on doing anything with it, but. We wanted to go ahead and put it in this year's budget, so we have some options. Obviously, the unrestricted money could go for something like stipends or bonuses, it could go for, you know, new city attorney office furniture would be a priority of mine, so that's up to, we'll, we'll figure those things out. But if there's any other Form One issues, I will get these to the department heads, the actual ones, I'll make those changes. And then they may have some changes and corrections, you Billy found, I know Billy showed me one where I, I had a nine, it was supposed to be an eight. So, but I will say, most of these numbers did come from the department. So I thank them for their efforts to go through their budgets and figure out what they thought they would need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, if you don't mind me asking Steve a question. What is the reporting for cities to the state, how often do we report?
They, we do it on a monthly basis, you mean the gateway?
Yeah.
Gateway.
We do it monthly, and when was the last time we did it?
I'm not sure, I'd like to see, we, we have, we have a grace period there.
A grace period, have we done any reporting this year?
Yes.
We have?
We've had to get the. The budget, the bank accounts are reconciled, and that's been done, reported.
According to state board of accounts, we haven't turned anything in since December, I'm talking about monthly reporting only.
No.
They don't say, then we need to check our system, because they don't say anything since December.
Yeah, we've got Judy Baden, that was the banker's house, yeah, she still has.
So is she, is she still doing the bank accounts?
No, we're, we're done.
We're done, okay.
We're reconciled.
When were those? Reports filed?
I don't see this as. You know, we got our six months in, so one of the, the last one was filed in July, well, not me, that's the last report, but July, we should get to date July.
Okay.
I'll check and make sure on that, but that's.
I'll check with my contact, because they were trying to look up what I was talking about, they said there was nothing in there from December, so I'll follow up with them as well. And we still haven't filed twenty twenty-one, right?
Twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, it was pulled down. Due to errors, has it been reposted on Gateway?
From the, from the. Audit, you mean?
No, from Gateway, it's not on Gateway.
It's not on Gateway.
Let's check on that tomorrow, it should be.
And twenty twenty-two, if I remember right, from the audit meeting, that one's incorrect, and we're correcting that, right?
From the audit?
Uh huh. Are we correcting it, or what were we doing, twenty twenty-two, we talked.
Twenty twenty-two's still on there, but it was filed late.
It was filed late, okay.
There's nothing wrong with that.
The. Okay, it might need correction.
Okay, so it's incorrect, so we really haven't filed anything since twenty twenty. Is that right?
File.
Well, it's not on Gateway, that's what, that's what I'm saying.
I, I mean, I, twenty twenty-two's filed.
Yeah, it's on there, but there's a, there's a disclaimer on it.
Yeah, yeah.
But twenty twenty-one got pulled, and it's still not been reposted.
I mean, the counties, I mean.
And it's a state, I always blame the state.
I don't know about twenty twenty-one, but twenty twenty-two definitely filed, it was late, but Steve, it was due like the day, I think it might have been due.
Oh, I apologize, this has nothing to do with Steve, I'm just talking about state. No, I, no, no, Steve, I'm sorry, no, I, my point is that the state isn't being reported to either, just like we're not being reported to. That was, that was their statement when I talked to them, so we need to find out why Gateway isn't seeing, the agents on the other end of Gateway aren't seeing our reporting.
Twenty twenty-one is, I wouldn't say missing, but it's been pulled, and I don't know why.
Okay. No, I apologize, I didn't, I wasn't poking at Steve there, I was just making the fact that the agent I've been in contact with, the investigative office says, does not see any Gateway or. And that the twenty twenty-one's missing, and.